That's on our agenda. So can we get a roll call right now? Michelle, are you there?
Sorry, I was muted. Yes. Robert, Director Jones?
Yes, here.
Director McLaughlin?
Here.
Director Bernstein?
Present.
Director Crowley?
Present.
Director Solano?
Here.
So can we stand now for the pledge of allegiance? A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic.
For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Uh, so is there, Michelle, are there any public comments before we get started?
There are, nobody's raised their hands, so no public comment. And Michael Scott, if you want to take over the screen now, feel free.
Okay, so we have a presentation as tonight's agenda is looking at a presentation and then looking at and considering capital improvement projects along capital improvement projects district-wide in the space need assessment. So the presentation, Michael, you there?
Yes, I'm here, just about to share my screen again.
Okay.
Okay. All right, is everybody able to see our, see my screen with the fire engine on it?
Oh yeah, that's cool.
Looks good. Cool engine.
Yeah.
So first, I'd just like to thank everybody for, this has been a exciting process and we, it's a very deep process. We have a lot of information to walk through today. I wanted to let you know, we, we're going to be moving at a pace to try and get us through the information, but at the same time, we want to give all the information, its due detail, so that you can get that you'd like to have. And so I do want to let you know, please feel free to let us know if we're going too slow or too fast. We don't want to go out and skip over anything that is important to you. But at the same time, if we're giving you so much information and you've read through the document and feel like we need to re-highlight that, then please let us know. We're going to be walking through, I'd like to introduce, my name is Mike Scott. I am a principal and lead of our public safety team at our RM Design Group. And then Charles J is with me. He's a, my right-hand man. We worked together on almost all of our public safety projects, specifically facility assessments and programming efforts like this. And so, thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Um, are, just to give you, we're going to go through kind of two sections of this presentation. We will, the first section is going to talk about our process and methodology. And then the second section will be really getting into the graphics that we've seen and the different options, the different options that we have to present. And then we'll end with each of those options with a kind of a summary of each of the options for the different facilities, so that there can be discussion and have times where we can talk about, if there's a decision able to be made on a certain facility, we can record that at that time and again, we can summarize that.
Okay, sounds good.
So to start us off, just the overall, the summary of this is of, oh, the study is for, is really this, this was to provide you information. This data report, it is a snapshot of a specific time and space, so there's, we'll, we'll try and highlight some things that may have changed since we started this study. But we're looking at the existing conditions. So we're looking at the facility assessments, looking at the functions and operations, the locations, facilities, and then we'll be examining the sites and giving you different options to help you, really the goal here is to help you be informed to make decisions. And so our first two goals, our goals of this is first to go through that review process and how this process was done. That's goal number one. And then, as, as we get to the end of that goal, we'll, we'll stop and ask if there's any questions or any clarifications we need at that. And then goal number two is to go through and review those options. And hopefully, reviewing those options will help inform you enough to be able to make some decisions either tonight or at a following meeting. So, um, these challenges and these goals today, we worked with the district personnel to do these four items to examine the personnel projections and the service demands to forecast future space needs, to identify the current project space deficiencies, and to recommend an action plan to upgrade, replace, or repurpose existing facilities or sites. And then finally, to provide guidance on acquisitions or what you want to do with your properties. So our methodology. First, we reviewed, there was quite a bit of existing work that was previously done that we reviewed that documentation. We also had a planner, as we look at some of the facility assessments, we have a planner in-house on staff that did some in-depth research from a planning perspective. We did program interviews with everybody, every department walked through, looked at their space needs of what they needed for all of the stations listed, warehouse and everybody in admin and HR and all the managing departments. We looked at the facility specifically and provided facility assessments, both from a planning perspective and from a observation of the facility and the condition that that facility is in. We also, we then formulated that into a space needs analysis and we'll, we'll share with you the tabulator of the space needs that we feel based on those interviews are needed for each department. And then we did some preliminary site analysis and fit tests. And those fit tests, we're looking at just overall, get very kind of big box bubbles of what could fit on sites. And we use that to, we'll walk through some conditions that we chose not to explore further because that fit test helped eliminate them, but then we'll, we'll go through further with those that we explored more deeply. And then finally, we developed those ones to choose to explore further into options that we have for you tonight and some recommendations. And I'll let Charles jump in and he'll start with some of our goals and objectives and our methodologies.
Yeah, so some of the big goals and objectives, really making sure that there's adequate space for all personnel offices. And that's both currently now and then projecting into the future. And we used about a 30-year projection when working with the district of kind of what they foresaw of staffing levels. Identifying and being able to serve both sides of the freeway adequately and efficiently. Providing IT redundancy. Looking to improve safety, safety improvements throughout, both in storage or different sites, physical and operational safety. Promote co-locating and efficiency of sites, looking for synergies between sites. Looking at the China change and make sure there's adequate space for battalion chief, east side battalion chief. Providing a functional training simulation center and tower that can be fully used. Making sure all, all fire stations have functional fitness rooms, so that there's adequate facilities at each. And then consider consolidation of some programs with water rescue and the warehouse and use are, again, looking at some of those synergies between those sites. That's just kind of a high level of what the, some of the goals and objectives from our initial meeting with the district staff. So I'm going to skip through, but we'll just kind of overview of the analysis. Like Mike already said, we looked at the property assessments from a planning side, so that's really what, what can that site withstand? What are the zoning? What are the setbacks? Are there any major considerations that, to rebuild new or, or to modify that we have to be aware of? What is the current status of that facility? Is it something that's a resource that's worth saving? Is it far beyond its useful life? Is it going to, you know, what, what are we doing there? So we're taking that into consideration. Looking at the programming, as Mike talked about, and I was talking with the district staff and figuring out what their space needs are now and in the future. And then lastly, with the fit test and strategies and how those all kind of fit on existing properties. In addition, we did look at some alternatives of purchasing new sites if they're available, just as an overall statement. It's pretty built-up district. There's not a lot of available sites. It's also very expensive real estate. So it's a pretty difficult scenario to find the right property for sale and to pencil out in most. So as we'll go through, you'll see that that's kind of common, that there's not necessarily recommended unless something were to come up. Very ideally, but at the time of our study, there was very limited property available that would be adequate for the stations or for other sites.
So as Charles is about to go through each individual site and the facility and kind of, and the findings, both from planning and an observation, broken out into site building, space needs, and then the fist, fit test and strategies that we looked at for each site.
Yeah, so this one and the rest will follow, but we have the property conditions and some, some major things. There's more identified in the, the report, but we wanted to go through these and then also the facility assessment. So Fire Station One is a fairly aged facility. It is not zoned correctly, but could be zoned for public facilities very easily with the addition of the site. It's just under the requirements that would allow for maximum usability of the site. Inside the facility, it's inadequate in size and functionality. It's not up to current standards of modern fire stations for safety regulations. The flow is constrained. It works. They've made it work. It's worked for 50 years, but it's just not up to the kind of current standards. There's not a strong separation between apparatus bay and the living, which is not the best for firefighter help and safety through some studies. The training tower is not fully functional and the fitness building is beyond its kind of useful life.
Something to note on, for Fire Station One is up here at the top, the, there's an advantage to converting it to a public facilities zoning because it allows, eliminates setbacks to nothing and gives you, allows a 60% FAR, which as we look at some of the options, we'll need, we'll need that extra FAR area because some of the options put quite a bit there. Yeah, could you define FAR? Floor area ratio. And I'm glad you asked because we did have to get some clarification on how that is calculated by planning. They do not calculate underground parking as part of FAR, but they do calculate each floor level above the ground floor. So the ground floor level and a second floor and above. So you have a two-story building, you're counting your, your footprint twice. But you can not count any underground. And that, that was a great distinction because some areas do count underground parking.
Yeah, each, each agency is different or each jurisdiction. Um, in the report, you'll see, but I'm going to just highlight here, we did give these a site score and a facility score, just as kind of a high level. So Station One had a site score of about a B. It's a pretty good site. There are some, some difficulties and constraints. And a facility score of a D, just to give a kind of an overall, where it's kind of currently standing. Fire Station Three is a very small fire station. It's probably the biggest facility assessment. So a single, single apparatus bay. It's very narrow, very cramped. It's hard for them to store gear and equipment. It's very difficult to access. And again, doesn't have a adequate exercise room. It's currently zoned to R1. It would need to be rezoned, but with the purchase of the exit house that's nearby, the property, there is adequate site to rebuild the station on that, that site. There are some easements and a few things that will need to work through, but they did not look to be overly constraining. So it had a site score of a B and then a facility score of a C, mostly because of the size and just the conditions of what it was originally built to and what current standards are.
Excuse me, is there a key to your, your rankings? I may have missed it.
It's in the report. It's not in our presentation.
Okay.
Fire Station Five is very similar to Fire Station Three, however, the district doesn't own the property around it, which makes it one of the most difficult fire stations. Again, it's single apparatus bay. The staff has outgrown it. It's very cramped for current standards. And the biggest thing is the lot size is insufficient for any modernization onsite. Would be very, very difficult and would have to say, stay with a single apparatus bay, most likely. Also, the neighborhood traffic has a lot of neighborhood calming features, which are not necessarily best for a response when leaving the station. So it has a little bit of a slower path out traditionally is what we see. So there hasn't been any, any major concerns like in the city gate report, but just something that our planners identified that there are a lot of traffic calming measures in that area. Yeah, site score, we gave that an F and that's basically primarily based on the size and what the setbacks required on that site because it is a zone for a residential site. And then the facility score, a C, similar to Fire Station Three, again, mostly because of the size of the station that is there.
Charles, I'm sorry for interrupting since the public is going to be watching this or this is going to be videotaped. Would you mind just going over the key so that the public knows, since it's not in the presentation? I'm sorry. I, I just, I, I don't know what A through, how many, how many rankings are there that the public should know about here?
Yeah, so it's, it's, it's just a simple way to try to identify where they're at. For the facility assessment, from A to, to F, we didn't use E. It has to be very good condition. That's your new, new fire stations that had been built. Which we're, we're not part of this study. Grade B is it's in good condition. It's been well maintained. It's functioning well. There might be some few deferred maintenance things, or it's been in service for 15 years, that type of thing, but it very minor improvements that would be needed. Grade C is fair condition, similar to like three and five. They work, they do the service, but they've been maintained, but they're, they're built 30, 40 years ago. They're not quite up to the current standards and just size limited. Grade D would be poor condition. That would be if there's considerable deferred maintenance. It's really not meeting the needs of the, the station, the, the services, et cetera. And then grade F is very poor condition. It's really not meeting those needs. Considerable deferred maintenance, maybe even life safety issues or something like that. For the property conditions, following the same general scale, there's a little bit of different requirements. A is, you know, you can build kind of whatever you foresee or whatever, you know, what we see can be built with its district needs through, let me actually go there. I can be a little more specific, but.
Robert, can, can I ask?
Do you want me to keep going with the facility grading scale or?
Yeah, because I think this needs to go out so that the public can hear what the rankings are, how they're being ranked.
Before you continue, Rob, you've got your hand up. Go ahead.
Yeah. I know the atmosphere there in Fair Oaks and in the areas of Flood Park, the Triangle, where I live, Suburban Park and Lorelei Manor, where they consider Station Five a very, very important station to have for responses. And I see that you've rated it as an F and a C. What I'm kind of concerned about is, is it structural or is it just because it's a small station that it's an F?
Yeah, so the F is only on the property profile. And that's what I was going to go through right now. That's just the size of the lot. It's primarily what's, why it's an F. So it's a very, very tight site with setback restrictions that make it very difficult to build the modern fire station on. Those are the biggest concern with Fire Station Five. If I go through the property assessment grading scale, I'll go through that real quick and then that will kind of give them an understanding of why, why that was an F. The C is, is again, primarily because of the size of the station not meeting current operational standards, which you'd want in the size for, for firefighters and to be able to provide a response to bays, et cetera.
Yeah, well, I'm concerned about
As Charles is.
The facility structural integrity relative to that building. Are there any serious structural problems with that, that building itself?
Not that, not that we're, that we noticed. We just did a walkthrough. We didn't do a structural analysis of the building. But it is a single-story station. It's, it's light frame. There's not a lot to be concerned about usually in a single-story station. So would it meet current essential facility? Mike, maybe you can chime in on that. I don't, I, that one's tough. That would take a full analysis, but I don't think there's any structural risks in the station.
I would echo what Charles is saying is, being a one-story light station, we didn't do a full, a structural analysis by, structural standards increase, it seems like every single code cycle. So when you have an older station, they never really meet today's perfect standards, but did it meet the standards of the time it was built? Yes, that, it doesn't, we see any visible structural issues? No, we didn't. It's not like big cracks or crack, things like that.
Right, that's what I'm, you know, concerned about is the aspect of the structural integrity of the facility. I can understand that, you know, maybe, you know, the organization wants to move that and, you know, that would be the consensus of all of us as board members. But, you know, I just know that the people that live in, as I've mentioned, those areas, you know, value the location of that station. So that would, that would be a consideration relative to my experience as to move it. So.
I would say, whenever you do renovate an older station like this, there would be, that doesn't, if there's anything that would need to be done to that, the structural cost to bring it up to today's standards would add to that renovation.
All right. Well, thank you, Michael. Thank you.
Okay. Real, real quick, let me, how long do you guys want to be on this particular call? Because I think it's important that we get the, the questions out, but I think in terms of having Michael and Charles kind of speak through this, can everybody just write down the questions so they can, we can hold that to the end so that we can get, get through it? Good questions. Don't get me wrong. I'm not trying to stop the flow, but I, I know everybody don't want to be here till midnight with this. But there's a lot of, there's 96 pages here they're trying to get through. So if you just hold off, if it's emergency, please jump in, but if you can hold that thought, then please hold it till we get, till they tell us that they're finished. Yeah, Rob?
No, Robert, I, you know, I, I just know that, that, that location, okay? When my wife had an endurism and coded because of the distance from that fire station to my residence in Suburban Park, saved her life and kept her alive for another six months. So and the reaction that I've got from those people too, other than myself, adds to the value of that station, even though it's small, but it's effective for the people that it serves. So I just want to make that point on, thank you, Robert, for letting me make that point.
True. Okay.
Charles, are the ranking values, are you done with the ranking values? I'd like to hear the rest of the ranking values.
Yeah, I'll go, I will go through that real quick for the property assessment. That's the site assessment versus the facility. Just want to differentiate those. And then I'll get back into Station Five and move forward. Does that sound good?
Great. Sounds good.
As Charles is going through those, if you do have your report handy, those are found on page 19 and page 33.
Right, but the public doesn't have access to what we're, to that. They're seeing what we're seeing now, which is the reason I'd like to, for that to be available to them.
I understand.
So on the property assessment, similar grading scale, just starting our traditional A through F. Very good is very suitable site. Plenty of space, not a lot of setbacks, not in a flood zone, those type of considerations. Good soil from what we know, the information we have. Grade B would be very similar to that, but maybe there's an easement or something over it that just needs to be addressed or larger setbacks. Possibly working with the city if there's some minor challenges. Grade C, a little more challenging, doable. Maybe there's some very significant setbacks or easements that when we're looking at locating a station or locating an admin office or whatever it is, would be, could be challenging or could be risky for the district. Grade D would be, yes, it can be used, but it would be very challenging, most likely a significant added cost or, and/or schedule delays in order to get, to make the site usable. And then grade F would be extremely difficult, most likely unusable or six significant costs in order to make the states, make the site usable for district purposes.
Thank you.
I think I hit everything on Station Five. I just want to make sure. The largest thing is the site is very tight. That's the reason for the, the grade F. For any future improvements, there's no room to expand and it'd be very difficult to even build a new station there. The grade C is just, again, it's in good condition, not a lot of deferred maintenance, however, it's very small and not meeting or looking to intend to meet the current or the future needs of firefighting operations. There we go. So Fire Station 77. Some of the biggest things is it still is currently zoned residential. It's a non-performing in size. There is significantly added traffic congestion now with the Facebook campus and the construction that's been going on. It isn't a flood hazard area. We could not tell by the documents that we had and the information if it was below the flood line or not, but it is within a flood general area. But a lot of the district sites are. That's just something that has to be dealt with. Of the facility, it, it's not in bad connect, connect, condition, but it is also not in the, the best. There's some deferred maintenance. The garage bays are too short for tiller trucks, both on the mechanic shop as well as in the, the station. They often have maybe one member working in the mechanic shop. And then the classroom on the second floor of the auxiliary building or ancillary building is not ADA compatible. There's, you know, just some significant, that would be fairly costly to renovate. The other thing, just to note on Fire Station 77, is that it's owned by the city and not owned by the district. So working through that would be, could be challenging or take, the district would have to put invest, more investment into city property versus into district property. That had a site score of a C and a facility score of a C. That includes the station and the, the auxiliary building are all. There's also a large easement along the, I believe it's a north side next to the train tracks that goes all the way, all the way back. So it looks like it's a bigger site than you really can use. And that's for sewer easement connecting to the school on the backside. As well as there's a, again, there's property that's being used by the fire district that's actually the railroad district property that they have allowed them to use, but you couldn't build a facility there. We have a couple slides for fire admin and annex. So bear with me. It's a little different format. So there's some historic overlay that's a little bit confusing with the, the building that's there. It's not registered, but it could bring up some potential issues with the city or an elongated process to do something with the, the annex building. It is in the 500-year flood plain, but that's not a big concern. The lots separately are non-conforming in use, but together, if they're joined, it could be conforming in use. So it's something to note. It's kind of restricting. The building, the current admin building is overbuilt for the site that it's on. It's, so it's grandfathered in, but making but making any modifications to that could be, could be challenging. Uh, if they recanted, if they're joined, you could expand onto the site. That's kind of a six thousand two hundred and forty-four square foot. Um, and it can be zoned to public facility, which would increase it to sixty percent and setbacks, and that would allow for that size of the development. The buildings in the phrases, administration buildings and generally good condition. It's kept up well, it's had some renovations, it's ADA compliant. Um, there are some concern with the parking garage, the lower rate clearance limit, some of the district vehicles can use that garage for both fire prevention and administration. Um, and the biggest thing is the functions that are currently in there have outgrown the space, it's very tight, especially on the fire prevention or first floor. Um, and there's not really anywhere to modify for other people to move in order to do that. The uh annex building is uh an old, it's an old house. Uh, it's not meant for offices and it's got limited functionality due to ADA uh access. So it it works, it's in decent condition, but it's not necessarily a good business administration building. Um, not, couldn't be used by the public without significant uh infrastructure improvements. And then um just, there's no security with vehicle parking. There may be uh, there is some asbestos known, so that would be just something to be dealt with as well. Uh, the admin building and annex, I got a site score of a B, it is centrally located, it's in a good, great location. Um, but it is a tight site. And then uh also for facility score, we gave the the admin building me and the annex building a D primarily because just the age of the building and the accessibility and uh difficulty making any modifications to it.
It's like Charles, uh, internet, Charles may be uh frozen.
Yeah.
Um, I can uh, I can keep us going as we're, we're taking a look at the warehouse. Uh, and then as Charles jumps back. Um, the warehouse, we have a, uh, there's a PG&E easement on the property. Um, and uh, uh, more investigation need to determine the level of the constraints required to that, but that that goes through um, through a portion of the property. Uh, the building setbacks, um, building, it's it has two property, it's built on two property lines with zero setback. And so any new structures, we need to comply with the setback requirement, so we need to pull the building back. Other, otherwise, you know, sometimes you can bring them closer with the fire ratings of the building. Uh, flood hazard, that's probably one of the big, bigger items. Um, it it it's, most of the lot is within the flood, a hundred-year floodplain with the remainder in the five hundred-year floodplain. And uh, the city, uh, the city has stated accumulated improvements valued in excess of fifty, fifty percent of the site evaluation um would require addressing the floodplain issues. So that's a big issue for this site, put in, um, if we're, so basically anything that's been done previous or anything that would be done um forward, they add all that up. And if you're half of that five million dollars, so two point five million dollars of of added cost to this, to the building, um, I think there's some site um security things that can be done separate of that. But in any of that added cost does uh enact that for us having to deal with the floodplain, which increases the cost significantly, as we'll see. Um, in the soil, um, there arsenic has been detected. Um, it's not currently on the federally registered brownfields uh sites for San Bernardino County, but arsenic has been detected in there. And so uh, in as excavations would occur, that would, um, if arsenic is for, you know, more widespread, that would definitely be cost to to uh to deal with. The facility, uh, as as we look at this facility, um, it is well organized, but uh violates safety regulations. Uh, it has disjointed administrative space that's upstairs with non, on that non-accessible second level. So that's if, um, if anything's done to that, that administrative space would need to be dealt with. Uh, we we don't see second story admin allowed without elevators anymore. Um, most of the lot is in the flood hazard area. Uh, it's, the building is acceptable for strictly storage purposes, but would require modifications if used for other purposes. Um, per the geotech report, the building's not structurally sound and could collapse during a major seismic event. So as we're storing uh storing items that are to be used during emergencies, that is a concern. Um, modification uh projects must minimize seismic impact. So anything we do, we really need to look, uh, look at what we're impacting on the building. So if we're putting another opening in it, uh, we really have to um look at where those can be based on structural evaluation. And then as we mentioned, due to the floodplain, the district is limited to the fifty percent cap uh of the purchase of the property. And so we'd have to deal with those those floodplain issues. Uh, approximately seventy-five thousand has been spent so far uh as part of that cap for the modifications. And so if we were to do one of the more extreme modifications of this area, we'd get to the place where we'd be triggering that cap. And so uh, we would really need to, uh, that'd be a major consideration as we look at that. So try.
Back on.
Jump back in, that's perfect timing to give us the scores for the warehouse.
Sorry about that, everybody. Uh, so the warehouse as a site score, uh, we did that a D. Uh, it primarily because of the floodplain. And then the facility as a C, and the C is a little bit of an interesting one primarily. Uh, it works well, or works as a C for a warehouse. Um, just, it should be noted that if it were to be used as different facilities or different uses, it it would probably have a lower, a lower grade. Closer to the the D range.
So as we examine those facilities, as we said, what we, what we showed you is both from a planning and a uh facility analysis perspective, uh, we then started to take a look at um the space needs uh of the departments. And uh, uh, here's some summaries of what we found. Uh, that uh departments were cramped and undersized uh for future operations and in storage. Uh, there were some that were constricted and inadequate space uh circulation around some of the app bays, is there a narrower and not as long as needed? Um, the, for medical supplies, storage for that and gear bags and other similar items. Um, we're kind of, that's typically what we do see of uh fire departments over time is everybody needs storage. Um, some of those things are stored temporarily out in containers spread around, around at other stations, which is not uh convenient when needed. And so it'd be better to have storage at the space at the locality of those stations. Um, some of the properties, uh, as we've seen, are confined by other adjacent properties or functions. And some of the buildings, um, uh, aging and not designed to support equipment and technology for future um intensive fire programs of today. So this very colorful graphic that we have up on the screen walks through uh the existing uh both for staff uh headcount of who's in these departments and the existing square footage that these departments currently have. And then as you move across, um, based on what we heard in our interviews, um, we did find that in general, there was a little more space in each department needed, some other departments. Um, for uh example, uh, information technologies in, uh, if some of you have been by their, their office space, it's very cramped. They have some storage needs for their facilities, they're kind of on top of their own equipment. So uh, theirs had a bigger jump in what we saw as the needs for them in the future. Um, uh, some areas, we saw some uh so such as shared administration areas, we saw some efficiencies. Again, depending on the layouts of being able to reduce some square footage as some of that shared space, like having a shared workroom and shared conference spaces and those type of things. Um, we, a- as you know, your boardroom uh is, uh, can use some increase in size to accommodate um more people and to accommodate both the function of it being a classroom uh and a boardroom. Uh, as walking through each of these numbers, um, uh, I I think, uh, I'll, I'll let you read through them. I don't know if we, unless someone tells me otherwise, I don't know if we need to go through each one individually. Um, you'll notice one of the larger increases is there, there are current plans for a training tower. Uh, the training tower that is there uh is currently in operational and there's a new plans for a larger five-story training tower uh onsite, and so that's one of the bigger numbers of the increases uh across there. Uh, you'll notice the staff, uh, we go from forty-two current staff headcount to a projected need of twenty fifty of forty-eight uh staff headcount. And that's largely due, I'd say if you were in a, a more rural area that's suburban sprawl is happening, that you'd see a lot more rapid headcount that we do in uh in other areas, but because of uh, the peninsula is very built out, um, that would be one of the reasons um, why you don't see your headcount growing because you're, you're staffing your existing stations.
So the other thing, um, before we start looking at where facilities go is what's the best organizational uh for operations for the district? So we're gonna go through just a few different models, um, and these are detailed in the report, just ones that we, we talked about with staff. Um, and what kind of works and from our knowledge, what we think will work best for the district. Um, so I'll go through these pretty quick, but a centralized uh organizational system or concept is you have multiple fire stations and everybody comes back to usually a fire station one to get supplies, to get training, to get their vehicles uh or apparatus fixed. This can be beneficial and efficient, but it also depending on traffic and other things can require, you know, long commutes um for firefighters and getting them outside of their, their area of service. Uh, more distributed was, is kind of how things are laid out now, um, whereas uh equipment and supplies are stored at each different station. Um, there's some benefits to this, is you can have firefighters responsible for programs. Uh, kind of some of the cons is though, is they move, who get two takes over, do all the supplies move with that person and who's responsible? Or do they have to go to different stations in order to maintain those? And it has less and kind of administrative management over those systems or oversight, you know, it's not in one place, so it's a little bit harder just to kind of track where things are going and how they're, how they're working. Um, I want to say that's a big problem with the district on, and team has a pretty good, good grasp of everything. Um, but it is a little bit more atypical and harder to manage. Service is similar to kind of centralized, but you would have maybe a sort of warehouse or it could be at a fire station one, but these are usually, um, we see this with some larger counties where they have a central, central program, supplies come in and they distribute those out to the fires, fire station. So there might be a warehouse runner or other personnel or staff. Um, kind of the con is, the con is it just requires more staffing. So it would require one to two more headcounts potentially. Um, or if you, there's people that have uh capacity, if they could do that. It also may take a little bit longer, or take a little bit of the control out of the firefighters and them being able to feel like they can just go get something, usually it's coupled with inventory management and other, other systems to make sure you go through. Um, and then kind of the, the last is a little bit of a hybrid. Um, and this is what we looked at particularly for um the district is having those larger areas um where supplies can be stored, but not having them at each station. Um, and particularly because of the highway, we looked at having more of a a hub on one side of freeway, on the east side and one on the west side. Um, so it would still be that individual stations would go to that hub to pick up supplies. Um, similar to going to just a fire station one, but breaking them up a little bit so that you can not have to take the, the major barrier going through one-on-one. Um, makes, makes flies a little bit closer and it gives people are the firefighters a little bit of an option. As you can see, you know, they can go to either fire station one or possibly, you know, warehouse or something like that. So through our uh discussions, we did find that this is probably the best concept for the, for the district. Primarily because of the one-on-one, uh, there's also some, as we'll go through the, the sites that fire station one site um is potentially fairly impacted with what can be put on that site. Um, and uh, the, we believe this would be, probably be the best with the given resources that the district currently has and the way that the stations are currently laid out throughout the district. So taking that into consideration, uh, and everything else that we've already discussed, the next was just seeing how some of these concepts uh can actually fit on the site, can they, can they take these programs, how much can they take? Through most of these options not have been eliminated. Um, so I'm not going to go through all of these, but we did look at the station one site and, you know, does it take, can it take any OC? Can it take uh an annex, does it take all admin and everything onsite, et cetera? Uh, Mike, can you go down next slide? And then we looked similarly at the station seventy-seven and warehouse, and you'll see this as we move forward, the two uh cruxes that we found were the fire station one site and admin and annex and how they work together. And then on the east side, more of station seventy-seven and the warehouse and how they can work together uh or not. Well, one more slide. So through that, the biggest kind of, some of the biggest findings, uh, taking us into the next stage where uh moving vehicle maintenance to station one just really didn't work. It was really tight uh with the training tower, uh, with the fire, the fire station activities, with any administration annex, parking, uh, deliveries, it would be very congested and difficult to um try to fit all of that on station, station one site. Um, moving all of the department supplies to station one or the warehouse, just because of the time needed to get over there to get supplies uh really looked like it was very, very limiting. Um, demolishing and replacing that administration annex building, due to the zoning limits, it really would be a costly um endeavor and wouldn't really get very much more square footage than what can be, be provided there already. And then we also looked at purchasing or leasing a different warehouse building uh as an option. At the time of our study, there was like very little inventory. I think there was one two thousand square foot warehouse that was available that would not, would not work. Um, the district just is not primarily a uh kind of manufacturing or industrial uh area, go a little bit south to San Jose and there's, there's lots of availability, but within the district boundaries, there's not. Kind of conclusion of test, station one can fit a significant program, but parking is challenging. Seventy-seven uh is developed completely uh without a raise and rebuild. It, it can really be limited to what it can take for existing or expanding upon a mechanic shop. Um, seventy-seven is limited for intrusive expansion opportunities, there could be some minor. The classroom component is not co-compliant, it is an old uh pre-engineered metal building, it would be most likely pretty difficult to uh bring it up to current standards. The warehouse upgrades um are not the most cost-effective and there's some significant risks there that we'll discuss a little bit further. The warehouse site could support a mechanic shop operation and call it consolidation with USAR. The admin annex building uh does not adequately meet the needs of any program per se. And the annex building uh limits some challenges to station one, we looked at possibly moving the annex building over there in order to free up space at the administration site. Um, but then limited other options that can be fit at fire station one.
So that, we've now, uh, thank you for bearing with us. Uh, we know this is a lot of information and we've gotten through our first phase, and so this would be a great time to pause. And if there are questions regarding uh some of the information that we talked about, I'm happy to uh uh scroll back to a slide if there's something we want to talk about here, and then we'll start to take a look at some of the options. As Charles mentioned, we've eliminated some options and now we're going to go through those options that we felt were. As Charles mentioned, we've eliminated some options and now we're going to go through those options that we felt were worthwhile to explore more fully and we'll get into those in a bit more detail, but do we question so far?
Anybody have any questions? Jim, Joe, Rob?
Robert, I have, I have a few.
Okay.
The, the warehouse, you say it's not cost effective to do the seismic upgrades. Could you expand on that a bit perhaps?
Um, well, it would be a significant and we'll get into that a little bit further, but just when we get down to the report. But there's both flood issues that would have to be addressed, soil issues and structural issues above. Foundation issues and structural issues up above. So it's pretty much a fairly complete renovation from below ground all the way up to the roof.
You know, and I, I wanted to point out on that, that warehouse site, it may not be on the federal list, but there is there are recorded deed restrictions that are imposed by the, the state regional water quality control board. I don't know if you're familiar with those or if you had a chance to see those.
I don't know if those are brought up or if our planners found those, so that maybe we missed those.
Yeah, I, I can send it to you. Like I said, I've got a copy of it here in front of me.
No, that would be great.
All right. Uh, that's all I have right now, Robert.
Do identify that as a risk because it is not on the federal, but it's surrounded. So and with that additional, that would
Thank you. Could, could you go back to the slide that says warehouse for twenty-four seventy Polga Avenue? I, I don't have a page number on mine, unfortunately. Yeah. Oh, right there. Thank you. Um, I just wanted to ask what, what it means exactly. So look at the second point here under building location setback. It says the existing buildings are built on two property lines. And any new structure facility would need to comply with the setback requirements. And I'm asking, I, I assume when this was built, there was some sort of waiver given. Isn't it, why would it have to be, uh, why would it have to comply with the setbacks at this point?
The existing building does not, but if it were to be raised and a new building were to be built, that it would be required to be to conform with the existing or with the setbacks that are required.
Couldn't, couldn't you perform some sort, and I'm, I'm not arguing for this, but couldn't you perform some sort of like lot line adjustment or something of that sort? And turn it into one property?
Uh, no, it's actually, it's on the neighboring. You'd have to buy property from the neighboring parcels.
Oh, I see.
We would definitely not need any setbacks from the internal property line since you own both of those, but it would be a setback from just the neighbor's property.
I, I see. And so just when you were say the words would need, is that with, with, with certainty or it would likely need? I'm just not sure how to understand the words.
I would say with pretty great certainty unless there's some political exceptions from the city. And it would also then at that, at that point, it would be zero property line. So it'd have to be a rated wall and other considerations that on top of that.
I don't think you mentioned for the warehouse, what the zoning is and whether we'd want to change that.
Have that there. We did look into that. Go back one slide. Mike, it is not mentioned there.
We don't have that on here, but I know it's in the report and we can pull that up as we are moving forward and confirm that.
Yeah, give me, give me a minute through my internet challenges. My, I have the report open, but
I was just curious, you were very diligent about giving the other ones and I just was curious there. Also about the slide you have on space needs, just as a general comment, what we're finding now is that the space needs are being informally redefined as a result of social distancing and things like that. Obviously you did this report before all this was done, but do you think that's something we would have to revisit again? Or do you think you, you've essentially accounted for it in the calculations you've performed?
Um, I can definitely tell you, we, at the time we did this, it was pre-COVID. So we did not account for the six-foot distancing that is currently recommended. We are, we're actually in the process of working internally with our own office, with other eight area agencies, looking at applying that. I think most people are looking at that as hopefully a temporary, a temporary basis. And so definitely if this was a long-term requirement, then the space needs would need to increase. As a temporary requirement, we're finding most municipalities are looking to make do with the space they had and not overbuild today. That would then be reduced back, but it's unfortunately, it's a, it's a changing question right now. But yes, these numbers do not account for that. Some of those we'd have to go into very deep. We'd like, some of these are offices, which means that would already be covered. And some of these might be spaces that are a little more cubicle-like and, and so there'd be not, they'd be a little closer, but also you'd have to consider traveling through offices and paths of travel and people keeping that distance while they're walking through hallways.
Potentially change bathrooms and kitchen facilities and
For the stations and they're all single, we're looking at unisex or unisex, single stall restrooms. So there will be very limited there. And just as a, this is an overall, there would, there would be a size increase. If like that was a, the direction, but the general offices are, there's not a lot of open office configurations are really tight. The district is not, you know, like a tech company where everybody's got a little four-foot workstation. To kind of work in. It is fairly tight right now. We, we did look at enlarging those, so those kind of workstations are built, built in. Not saying there wouldn't be changes, but I don't think it would be as significant as some other type of office configurations.
Just kind of add to that just a little bit. So if I understand you, the, the numbers, square footage right now, you increased it based upon personnel change, additions at that point in time. So the office configurations, are they, are they, are the cubicles, are they, are they similar to, to anticipated or would they be similar to what they look like now? Would the hallway still be the same size? Because I think that adds to any kind of, if there is another pandemic, for example, and there may be. With that hallway in particular, if it stays the size that it is or in even in a new structure in any of the, the fire stations, in particular fire station one. Because it seemed like there's going to be, you know, if, if they move over there in terms of staffing, that, that, that whole configuration, rather than being open, but rather than, than a cubicle, would there be more of a spacing in the hallways? At that, do you think? And it, and it's relating back to the COVID thing too. That's where it's coming from.
Yeah, I think you would see a little greater spacing in the hallways. I did want to point out that on the screen, everything in red. There, there's a lot of storage and you know, mechanics, there's very few mechanics in a large open space, water rescue. You know, urban search and rescue. A lot of those areas are storing equipment and, and have very few people in them. It's the office space is that might you see, but most of your spaces, as Charles said, modern day fire stations are going to have individual bunk rooms, individual restrooms. The kitchens are, have enough space for there to be distancing. The day rooms even do have enough space to be distancing. I think it is those office spaces, the cubicles, when we do, when you see the layouts, we do consider about a six-foot hallway typically, and then about eight by eight cubicles and then the offices. And those are the open cubicles and the offices with, would have walls that would be enclosing. So you'd see a little bit more increase in space in those office areas, but a lot of your other spaces, like your existing fire, your fire stations and things probably would not change. And I did want to follow up just to, we have the answer for the previous question. Page thirty of the report does identify that Ravenswood Employment District is the district for the warehouse.
What kind of just, what, what does that mean?
Yeah, it's a, it's a little bit of a different one. That's the zoning is it's R dash EC. And it was kind of a special zone for, for industrial and I think it was in I don't know the history on it, but I believe it was to encourage investment.
So it's on, it's on the city's plan. And the people that just bought, Harvest had just bought the property behind us, the old, the old pesticide facility. We're planning on turning that into office space. I'm not sure what the plans will be now going forward, but yeah, it's, it's got, East Palo Alto has that all laid out in their master plan.
Right. So Chuck, it's on page thirty-six of the report. So I do have a question that's similar to Chuck's in terms of the REC zoning. I'm assuming that's for private. Is there even an opportunity? I'm just curious for the city to zone that or to, is there a rezoning opportunity to a PF or is that completely out of the picture since this is REC? Because the, the one I think in station one, the FAR is six, is it sixty percent? I think it's on page twenty-seven. And you said that there could be an opportunity if we rezoned. Is there that opportunity for the warehouse?
The, the REC zone is very favorable. It's a hundred percent floor area ratio.
Okay, okay. I, I, cause I don't know what that, I didn't know what that meant either. I know what PF is, I just didn't know what REC, because it seems like it's unique to East Palo Alto.
So it, um, it, it's a hundred percent. So you could be able to build a sixty-seven thousand square foot warehouse there.
Okay, thanks.
We didn't, we didn't look at changing it to a PF because there wouldn't want to be really any benefit.
Yeah, no, okay. I just wanted clarification because I didn't know what REC meant.
And, and one of the other things that, that Harvest discussed with us when they bought that property is since they can't come out on Week Street and they can come out only on Bay Road, they were already asking if we would sell, lease or some other sort of deal. You know, prospectively, so just discussion. The easement that goes through their property because they have an access problem on the Polga. So you were kind of in the catbird seat, so to speak, with that piece of property next to what, you know, what was going to be, I think at some point, a major development. But the good news is Harvest is a major developer. So I don't know what's going to happen obviously going forward. But there was some preliminary discussion when they became the owner of some type of joint plan or purchase or lease or whatever. So, you know, that hasn't, there hasn't been any activity on that for months. But that was discussed at one point.
Right. I don't have any more questions. More question? Rob, Jim, okay. Charles, you want to continue? Mike?
Great. I will catch us back up to the slides that we where we were on and make sure. So now we're going to be getting into taking a look at each of the options and we're going to be focusing on we've broken this up into the groups of the buildings that tend to affect each other. With what is going, what, what the pieces might move back and forth between those two sites. And so we're going to be looking at fire station one and the admin building together. And we're going to walk through option A through E. And then at the end of that, we'll stop, ask questions, talk through things, compare those sites, those, those A through E options for just those two sites. And then if there's a decision that can be made at that point, we make that or then after that, we'll be taking a look at the other sites.
That's good.
So as we look at, this is a lot of information. There's, what I'd like to do is walk you through and just give you the summary. That's there on the right. And then as we go through, we'll take a look at the graphics of, of it. And we'll talk through, for this first one, I'll go through some of the strengths and weaknesses because there'll be some consistent themes that you'll see specifically on station one with some of the strengths. And just a note, as we go through, at the beginning of each option, we're going to take a look at this summary page. And then we'll go through and look at the graphics and then go on, and then we'll look at the summary page for the admin building. On each of the summary pages, there'll be a section that talks about the costs. And I know there's a lot of numbers as we're going to look at five different options. I, I just wanted to let you know for memory sake, there, those, those numbers will be summarized on the last slide as we compare all the options together. So that I know there's a lot of information, just thought that would be, would be helpful.
Hey, Mike, just quickly on the cost, a quick question. This is, is this the most updated number or is this pre-COVID costs? I mean, I know you can't estimate for the current cost, but I'm just wondering if this takes that into consideration or not.
You know, um, it's funny, actually this is the most updated number. It's very recent. I did have a conversation with our outside cost estimator. I should point out that these costs are the first pass at a cost estimate that we, Charles, myself did internally. That is based on cost per square foot of different types of structures. The next step, after we have some decisions from you, we'll be able, we have a cost estimator onboard to take what you'd like to look at more closely to an outside cost estimator.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome. But I did hear from the outside cost estimator that they have not seen changes in costs due to COVID recently, construction is still moving forward and they haven't seen a drop because we've had other clients ask that same question.
Thank you.
Mike, real quick on the cost, these are today dollars too. So just
I figured that, Charles.
And we don't know how long all this will go out. So.
Yeah. So taking a look at option, option A for fire station one, it's going to be a new two-story station. The first floor of the station will be the, the station itself and training. And you'll see that pretty consistently because we found that that was a valuable way to go. So you'll see that consistently for the options. That the first floor is predominantly having the training on the ground floor. Cause we heard from the training department. They like to be next to the training center, didn't necessarily always need to be in a separate building outside. And the second floor is where you'll see some differences through the options. On this option, we have pretty much admin, human resources, info technology and management, pretty much everybody, but, but fire prevention on the second floor of the fire station. All of the options are going to include the new training, the new training tower. We know there's some designs for that that have moved forward. So we've just gone with the size of that and the location of that. But as we've, and those are by somebody else, but we haven't, that can be changed later at the board discretion. But for, for this study, we're looking at making sure that we're getting the proper turning radiuses around the training tower. And any building that we place on site doesn't impact that. This one also has a one-story standalone building towards the back part of the site that houses the EOC storage and the boardroom and classroom with capacity for seventy. This specific option has underground parking below the station. So that's something to point out. If we look at the different options, you'll see the options that require underground parking, some of them are below the station. And then so, and some options, we have the underground parking below the ancillary building in the back of the site. If this option has it below the station. And then it has a, a secure fence around the site. For, for other parking. Something that is consistent with a lot of these options is as we look at the phasing is we feel that the cost is a benefit when we have that ancillary building in the back to build the ancillary building first, utilize that as the temporary station one. And then build the new station one, which would then provide the space to relocate people from the admin building. So that's a pretty common, common phasing strategy for each of these options. It shifts a little bit for some of the other options. So station one has an underground parking where everything is going to start from the ground up. You, you see the dashed line of the station. We're, we're provide, we're showing of the most efficient construction method of an underground parking. So that you get the bang for your buck on your cost per space. It, when it's under station one, some of that is under the station and some of that is under the outside space. And so there's a little bit of construction And so there's a little bit of construction complexity there, but it, it is, it is done. This, this parking layout, the goal there is to make sure the elevator and stair align with the upper floor elevators and stairs. So someone comes in, parks underground, can take the elevator all the way up to the second floor, to the first floor from within, and then a secondary stair. The ramp, we do need to have a ramp to get into the underground parking. And as we go to the next slide, that ramp comes through. It, it does take away one of the, one of the trade-offs of this layout of having the underground parking is we don't have the ability. There was a desire to have a drive that goes out the Middlefield Road on the other side of the station. And that ramp to get to the underground would not allow that to happen in this option. As we look at the ground floor, we have, we, we try and consolidate our entry gates. We have public parking here to address the lobby where we have the, the dark brown areas is our training offices. The, the kind of reddish brown is all of our fire station bunk rooms, single-story fire station. Everything for that fire station is on the ground floor. The support for the fire station, any of the dirty spaces or hot zone areas are on the opposite side. And then we have our offices up in front with our training and our bunk rooms, restrooms down the middle, kitchen dining day towards the back where we have a firefighter patio. And then exiting out towards the back area where we have a security gate and our secure parking. Getting us, we have forty-nine parking spaces on site. We do show parking in all these options next to the training tower, but with the caveat that during training, you know, we wouldn't be having people park next to the training tower because those cars would be in the way. The, the secondary, the ancillary building in the back, we're able to, we're allowed to be within five feet of the property line. So we want to push that building as far back as we can to allow for as much parking and as much turning around the, the five-story training tower. And you'll see, as we go through this training tower, we're showing you some different configurations of whether it's rotated, rotated lengthwise or rotated lengthwise this way. They both give similar, but just slightly different clearance spaces for the turning around. So the, the ancillary building has a storage bay that we would envision a roll-up door here for the ability to have the different storage components that we programmed all within that area. Then our training classroom that has the area that would open up for the DS for the board meetings, training store, the storage for this classroom, restrooms, and then the EOC and all of the EOC-related offices that can be used as breakout spaces in addition to the conference rooms that can be used for both the training classroom and the EOC and breakout spaces during an event. It should be noted that there is discussion about whether the EOC and the fire station, whether the EOC should be part of the fire stations. We look at some of the upper floors and it was deemed that during a, an event, the concern would be that this would be a very busy fire station responding to that event. And having the EOC in a separate building would be more advantageous so that we don't have everybody crowded at that one facility. The, the second floor of this option is just showing our second floor of all of our admin space other than fire prevention. And as we'll see in a moment, fire prevention is over at the admin building. So as we, as we look at the admin building, we are remodeling a portion of this to expand it to just be fire prevention. We'll reconfigure the building and the entry reception so that the elevator opens onto the new lobby area. Currently, you have to go behind the desk to get to the elevator. This, this is going to allow us to get to that elevator, the public, it'll be on the public side. Having a large planned intake counter and waiting area is going to be much larger than what you currently have and what we see in a lot more of the plan check counter areas. And then a small conference room right off of the lobby space. Those are some advantages of, that's going to be added to fire prevention. For the annex immediately adjacent to the admin, this concept would have us vacate the annex and you would be able to sell or relocate that building and then that adjacent site we would use for surface parking. This shows that adjacent site where we would be able to capture, there's some existing trees there. So I'm thinking we would need to protect those trees. We feel like we'd be able to get about fifteen spaces at grade level of parking. This shows our public counter and our public waiting area that gets you all the way over to the elevator. So a nice, nice, larger area for public and for waiting with a larger counter. And then all the offices of fire prevention around the back. And then some of the offices brought upstairs. So that, that takes a look at fire prevention's full build-out for the future. And this building will accommodate that in very, very close numbers. As we look at option B, option B is replacing the existing station, still with a two-story station. The first floor is still the station and the training department. The second floor, though, now includes fire prevention in addition to admin, HR, IT and management. So the difference between this and option A is we're taking, we're, we're actually taking everybody over, including fire prevention, to that second floor story. Still has the same training tower. We have a standalone two-story building in the back that now, instead of being one story, it is a two-story supporting and still having the storage, the EOC, the training offices and the classroom capacity. And we'll see some growth space on that second floor. This one, because of the increased capacity to the site, this one, we're really filling the site up in this option. You need underground parking and we need a larger version of underground parking. So we're placing that in underneath the ancillary support. We still have our secured parking. And then with this one, the added administration and the annex building are able to be sold. And so under, as you see the, the cost, you'll see Station One cost, training tower cost, ancillary building with the underground parking garage cost, and then a, the negative cost of the, what's anticipated to be the sale for the, the administration and annex site, if you were to choose to do that, that would offset the construction.
Michael, are these options ranked?
Yes, at, at the.
A being the most preferred?
Oh, great question. We are not in order of preference on here, but at the end, we will walk through and give you a ranking based on the strengths and weaknesses, what we feel the preferences are.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Great question. So option B shows the different location for the underground parking, which provides, it's a bit larger. One, one thing that we found an advantage and we feel that the training department would probably like this as well, the current layout of the training tower has a basement included in it. And so by budding up the basement, which they would be excavating for that anyway, where you, while you're excavating for an underground parking, that would give you the added benefit of connecting to the underground parking as part for your training. So what I, I, there'd be some, some type of connectivity there that would allow access to that training basement from the parking. But this underground parking provides for fifty-seven spaces. And again, we made sure that the elevator goes up into the building to get to the upper floors. The advantage of placing that underground parking on your annex side is when the fire station, when the firefighters are relocated, they, they will be down for less time because the construction of the fire station, or they'll be relocated for less time, I should say, because the construction of the fire station will happen much quicker when it doesn't have parking underneath. That being said, it does make the parking for the annex, for the ancillary building to be, to take longer. So the, the phase one would take longer, but the, the following phase of building the fire station would be faster. What you'll notice is a little bit of an L-shaped first floor building because we are, we feel that you can have the ramp for the underground parking be as close to the property line as possible to get to the underground area, but still want to maintain this face of the building as opposed to taking the whole building that we saw in option A and pushing it forward. We brought this back, so we have your training classroom here with the restrooms, conference area, and then your, all your equipment and storage is over in this area with the EOC then brought up to the second floor. This still has similar circulation patterns. You'll notice that the train tower is rotated because of that underground parking below. We felt that was a better configuration. But that gives you similar clearances around the training tower. Just depends on which side is, this side's a little wider now instead of that side. But they all have safe clearances and it just depends on which side they want to ladder up to the tower for. Because there's no underground parking here, the secondary drive aisle is now out to Middlefield, Middlefield Road. Layout for the fire station is, is the same, but the differences are as we go to the second floor, we now have the layout for the second floor extending over the apparatus base. And so that does have, in some of the pros and cons, that does have a little bit higher cost because you can't, usually the app bays are taller than the house side or the living side. And so this whole second floor would be a little, raised up a little higher so that everything is on one level at that second level above the app bay floor. This does include all of the IT and management and admin and, but also includes fire prevention. So one of the considerations is it's nice to have everything consolidated, but now we do have people from, who are coming to fire prevention to have their plans checked coming to Station One. And so just making sure that the lobby on the ground floor is secure so they can come in, come up to the lobby on the second floor without bothering the firefighters at Station One, that would be just a, a secure, a public to private concern that would need to be dealt with if we, if we're putting fire prevention at Station One. The second floor of the ancillary building is predominantly the EOC with one advantage is of having the server located back here, give some redundancy and the ability to have that done in phase one before it's taken out over here at the fire station and at the, the admin building. And then we, we're showing some future growth space. So we have some ability to have future growth as we've looked at these options. If there was a desire to move some of the spaces from over the fire station to the second floor, this option would allow that to happen, reduce some over here, space with some of those, whether that would be fire prevention or one of the other management or admin functions. Oh, it should be noted that because we're bringing everything to Station One site for, for the administrative functions, you would then be able to sell, sell the admin and annex building. So we don't have a layout showing that. Option C, option C is going to be a single-story fire station. So as opposed to the, the last two were two stories, this one is going to be a single-story fire station, still has the same training tower and it has a one-story EOC and storage building. So this would be the, the least impactful option to the Station One site. You'd still have your training tower. We'd still maintain the classrooms have a capacity of seventy. There's no second floor, none of the admin or management or fire protection are located here. They're all going to be located at the admin building. There would be no underground parking required here because we're not bringing as many people over to the site. And so we just have surface parking. So you'll see a, a similar but slightly reconfigured ground floor because we don't have stairs or elevator or elevator mechanical room. But we do have our living area in the back here for our firefighters that have our bunk, our restrooms in the center with our bunk rooms around the perimeter to have windows. And then our kitchen dining day area with the firefighter patio. Just showing a different option of having it on the side in this option. Our support is still separated. We like to keep those hot zones on the other side of the app bay. And then our training is still part of the first floor station. So any of our training and our station office is all in that front corner of the station. The, we still have the same training tower. And then on the backside, we have our one-story, our one-story ancillary building that has the EOC on the ground floor, training, training classroom, boardroom, and then storage building. So there are no two stories here. This is the least, there's no underground parking. So that would be an admin, an advantage for each of the constructions of these. But it does, we do need to have the annex. And in this scenario, we would, for the, for the admin building, we would demolish or relocate the annex portion and we would expand the existing admin building over to that site. And we would provide some underground parking, very similar to what's there now, that would net a similar parking counts below, and then the building would expand, extend above. This shows, this line shows the location of the existing wall of the building where we'd be putting fire prevention in much of the similar configurations we were doing before. And then we'd be extending the other admin, HR, IT and management over into a second story or really a ground, kind of the above-grade first floor that matches the grade level of the existing admin building. We would then have underground parking under that building. One thing to note on this option is it does exceed our floor area, area ratio of sixty percent for the PF zone. And so we would need to go in for a variance if we were to try and, we, we felt that in order to have this option where we just had one story at the Station One area, we wanted to keep everything over here. And this really builds out that site. We are able to fit pretty, just about everything over here. There's a few meeting rooms that we're, I think we're having to share and such, but it does get, get us over our floor area ratio.
Michael, by how much?
Actually, I think we were probably about not more than ten percent over the floor area ratio. I think we were around seventy, just a little under seventy, with sixty being the.
Yeah, I think, okay, thank you.
And the important to note with that is the underground parking does not count as part of.
Right.
If that had counted, we'd be off the charts.
Right.
But that would still be a variance that would need to be sought if this was something. Or, or some of the area could be reduced and, and brought over to either the ancillary building or Station One if there is a department to relocate.
Thank you.
Sure. So, so far, the first two options are just different, two versions of a two-story Station One and then going down to a one-story Station One in option C. And so option D, we're looking at replacing Station One with the new two-story station and then retaining the, the training tower as, as we did, and then having a one-story training EOC storage building. And so this one, with this one, the second floor for fire prevention has, the second floor has fire prevention, information technology, but we're keeping the administration, management and human resources over at the, the admin building. So this one is really just looking at who stays at the admin building versus who would go, go to Station One. With this one, we do have surface parking and underground parking under the station. So here we have, we don't need as many spaces. And so we do have the underground parking underneath Station One again, as it's a smaller version. We have a similar ground floor with the elevator included and stairs because we're going to have a second floor. We have our single-floor EOC training classrooms and storage on the back part of the site with our training tower. And the primary difference for option, for option D, it is similar to option A in the sense that it has the underground parking. So we don't have that drive out to Middlefield Road on this side. But that, we are able to stay off of going over the apparatus bay. And so this one keeps us just over the living side, so saving, a little bit of savings in construction cost over, over option B that goes over the app bay, but we're just having different, different departments living at Station One versus living at the annex. So that would be the primary difference between option D. So taking a look at option D, the annex, we do have administration, management, HR remaining at this, at the annex or the admin building. We would still vacate the annex for it to be sold and used for added parking. As per the prior options where this area. We again be able to get our 15 parking spaces, but then these are those. Instead of fire prevention being here, this would be more of the admin management, I P and H R functions. And they do fit within the existing second floor and the existing existing building. So both the options that don't expand the administration building would be much less costly as it's a lot less interior remodeling, hopefully using a lot of the existing offices that are there and doing some interior tenant improvements.
Hey, Michael, can you just remind me which one, which option is the one with fire prevention there? A, I can't remember. Sorry.
That would be, I will definitely remind you as we do the summary, but it is option A.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Okay.
To let you know, we're about to move to option E and option E. Really kind of the story is as we were doing option E, we were originally just going to bring you A through D. And then we saw some benefits of a little bit of a combining, really looking at A. So he will be similar to A, except that we're going to see a larger admin building or ancillary building. So option E does have a single story station that is that does not have any underground parking under it. And so a benefit of that is this is we feel this one, this option would allow the fire station to be impacted as little as it would for option C. So it has no underground parking. It's a one story station. It's the fastest build for a fire station. So as far as the firefighters being out of station one, this one would have them out of station one, the least amount of time. It does have the new two story. E O C storage, training offices, classroom. And then on the second floor, it brings the admin, human resources, information technology management. So instead of having it's similar to option A, except instead of having those admin functions over the fire station. Is putting them on the second floor of the ancillary building. With that, it does have the underground parking under the ancillary building and then secured parking on site. So this option shows there's our underground parking underneath the ancillary building with our drive coming in and our connection to the training tower. Here is our one story fire station with the stairs and elevator removed. Again, the smallest fire station, no underground parking, so it allows the drive up to middle field. Coming around same training tower. Again, rotated because of the parking underground under the ancillary building. And then the similar first floor for the answer building with storage on the ground floor, we felt that you've noticed that as a as a common theme. We didn't feel people would be excited about going upstairs to to storage. So placing that on the ground floor for a lot of the heavier items as well. And then training classroom, boardroom on the ground floor with restrooms. Something to note is we felt like in with this option, there is the option of having some visitor parking near this building. So without entering the secure parking for the firefighters. So giving you some visitor parking adjacent to this building as well with an with a entry door here right on Santa Monica Avenue. Is one option that can for any of these ancillary buildings. Then the big difference here is taking the items that we did have over the fire station and H R I T management. And admin all on that second floor of this of this admin building along with the E O C. One of the advantages, what we found is when we do E O C design is you do need a lot of those breakout rooms. And so having office type of functions adjacent to the E O C. When there's an event, those office functions can be doubled as additional breakout rooms. So that is a benefit. For the administration annex, this is again, this was a hybrid option he was. So looking at that. We're again placing fire prevention at the at the administration building. So this is similar to option A where fire prevention alone was at the admin building and then we're creating the parking lot. Here in the annex site. So the station one admin building is the one that has probably the most detail and the longest one. Thank you for hanging with me. We're now at the summary that and I will just to remind you. The summary shows you the comparisons for the costs. And these costs are added up from each of the the totals that you saw. And it's the total cost for the total of both the station one and admin building put together. And and option B includes deduct of that seven million based on the sale of the added admin in the annex site. So I'll remind you again, A, B, C, D, and E. A is our two story building that has everything but fire prevention on the second floor for the fire station. And and it has fire prevention at the admin and then a single story ancillary building. Option B has the two story fire station with all of the administration functions, including fire prevention above the fire station. And then we're going to sell the annex. And it has the two story ancillary building that has some the the expansion space above. Option C is the single story, both the single story ancillary building and fire station at the fire station one site. And the largely expanded headquarters or annex building. At the administration site. And then option D is the two story with fire prevention and I T above. And then all the other admin functions at the annex site in a single story. Ancillary building. And then option E is similar to option A in that, but it is a one story fire station with a two story ancillary building and fire prevention at the administration building. So to walk through some of the some of the pros and cons. And then as I'm doing that, you can see here, we have ranked these, we felt that option E. And I'll walk through those pros and cons in a moment to finish off this section. Option E, we felt was for the the reasons that I'm about to list, we felt was the most advantageous. Then option B. Then option A. And then option C and then option D. And the cost for those you'll see are across across the bottom. To take a look at option A's. The the advantages is it consolidates the operational management functions. It has no space over the app bay. It has manageable remodel of the admin building. It's use of support building as the temp station during fire station one. The disadvantages are it requires subsurface parking under the station. The station construction because of that will take longer. And it has limited conference rooms and space for growth. Option B consolidates all the functions being over the the station. It has the surplus of the admin and annex building. And it uses the support building as a temp station for fire station one construction. The disadvantages are as it requires subsurface parking under the station. It has large and long term financial commitment. It has one site for the whole project since we're everything's at the station one site. It has heavy, heavy public use. So there is a risk of interruptions as we mentioned with fire prevention being over there at station one. And then because of because we do have everything there, the parking is tight for that site. So we would need to find some additional parking to make that one park.
Mike, would this one also have an F A R variance required?
Um, yes, it would. The F A R. Oh, you know what? Actually.
Believe it would.
Yeah, I believe it would. It would be very close, but I was surprised to see how close it was. But it would be very close. So as this one moves forward, we'd look at how close we are to the line as the design moves forward. But yeah, there is a real chance of that F A R. Needing to be a variance need to be required there. That would be for for B. E is also very close, but a little bit, but it is a little lighter. And so I think we're just on the other side of the line for option E for the F A R.
Thank you.
Good question. So option C, if to remind you is the one that has only a one story over the the fire station in the ancillary building. So it would only have surface level parking only, no underground parking. It's the most economical because there's no underground parking for the station. There's little public use risk. At station one, because there's things spread out. The use of the support building as a temporary station similar to the other projects is still available. The challenges for it or the negatives would be that it separates the functions, keeping them at different sites. Which is challenging administration in addition remodel. So we'd have to find a place for admin as we're remodeling their space. There's insufficient parking. For that one, because we have everybody on the admin site, there'd be insufficient parking at the administration site because we were keeping everybody there. We would need to relocate relocation of admin during construction. Option D. The pros is that there's no space over the app bay. If you remember, it does have some admin functions on the second floor, but not over the app bay. It's a manageable remodel for the admin because it's it's just to interior tenant improvements. The use of the support building is a temp station available on this option. It does require subsurface parking under the station. There's moderate public use risk of interruptions at station one. Their station construction does take longer because it does have the underground parking. So any of the ones that have underground parking in the station make that take longer. And there's limited conference rooms and space for growth. Option E. It provides sufficient parking. The construction of the fire station will be be fast as no parking is below the station and there's no second floor. So both E and C would have the fastest fire station construct. There's manageable here remodel at the admin building as that's only for fire prevention. The use of the support building as a temp station during construction as the others that that also has that. And it does provide room for growth. For the lower station and admin impact during construction. He has probably the least negatives, which is why we ranked it number one, does require subsurfacing parking under the station support building. But we felt like the other, the other deficiencies on the other options did not apply to this one. So thank you for, this is the most detailed and complex of the sites that we're looking at. We are now ready for your questions.
Any questions? Jim?
Well, how much more? Presentation do we have? I have some general comments I think apply to the overall effort. I don't want to deliver those now if we're at a midway point.
Well, Michael, we're how much more? I know there's some more below this, this slide.
We do, we we need to walk through the station 77 and warehouse together. And that that has fewer options than than this, but there are, there are still some options there. And then we would look at station three and station five, which has even fewer options. Which if we are going along and we tried to break this up to where if this was a stopping point and you wanted to defer that to another meeting. This is a good stopping point to do that, or we could go through the warehouse and then do it after that. But I I'd like to hear the the warehouse, Robert, and then perhaps we could defer the other facility.
Any other comments, Chuck?
I had a couple of of questions. What is the size of the E O C that's being proposed?
Let's see, if it's if it's all right to go back to our space needs slide, I can.
Chuck, do you mean for option E or for any of the options or in general?
Just in general, I thought they were all the same size.
Yes, they are.
Okay.
And I can, if
Mike, it's 1800 square feet.
Oh, thanks. Thanks, John. Thanks for being fast for us.
1800 square feet and does that include all the offices that would be part of the E O C also?
No, Director, it would not. Those would be in addition.
And how much? I guess I'm trying to understand when we say E O C, what's that whole part of it? I'm wondering if we're even going to have an E O C. So that's, that's why I'm asking, what's, what's the increment that the E O C brings to this project?
About 4,400 square feet, a little bit less.
4,400 total. Okay, thank you.
And that includes disaster offices.
And then I just wanted to ask very general questions. Is there any reason to consider a three story building, particularly for the annex, not the annex, excuse me, the ancillary building?
Hi, Charles.
I believe we could do that. It would be probably a little bit more difficult politically with the city to build such a thing. We're already with the fire training tower. There's some considerations there to how to how to do that, but it's a little more direct that, you know, it has to be big. That would be probably the biggest reasons. And then going three stories does require usually a different type of elevator. You get more stairs. It starts to be a little more difficult for an essential facility because you have bigger structural systems. It's a more costly, I should say.
Okay, we don't need to go further than that. We're just curious about the, let me ask you about the storage function. Is there any reason, and maybe you couldn't just because of the height limitations or something. But could you put the storage that's being proposed in part of the underground area, the parking, underground parking area?
We we could do that. Typically, the underground parking is going to be the most expensive square footage to construct. And so the storage could go down there, but trying to maximize our parking spaces. We're the, it would be more cost effective to have it at the ground, ground level, but that is an option to be able to place some storage there. And there are those corners, sometimes there's corners and underground parking spaces that you can chain off and play some things in. But as far as making extra space underground, it would just be more cost, cost efficient to keep it on the ground floor.
And and height consideration. Trying to usually try to keep parking structures lower in height, the higher we go, the harder they are to to structurally support. Considering that, you know, a lot of times it's going to be the fire apparatus that are coming to pick up, they wouldn't be able to drive down into the structure to pick up supplies.
Or semi trailers or something of that. Although I noticed that Safeway now is putting a lot of its food storage under underground. Let me ask you about the parking because that's, that's something is when I guess I don't understand in for B and E. Why the parking has to be under the station as opposed to under the ancillary building?
E, the parking is under the ancillary building.
Well, let's say, which is
A, A, B, and I think A and D, if I'm correct, are have parking underneath the the fire station. Am I correct in that?
That is correct.
So those were the two then, A and D. Why couldn't that parking be under the ancillary building?
And item E, it is.
No, no, D, A and D.
Oh, A and D.
Hey, Mike, I believe the reason for that was we have a one story ancillary building in the back. And if we were to put the parking at that location, we would have to push that building closer to the training tower and we would not have sufficient circulation around the training tower. Is that correct?
That is correct. That would either be pushed closer to the train tower or would then turn into a two story building, which all of a sudden becomes one of the other options.
But I guess I'm not understanding. It would push the ancillary building closer to the training tower?
Um, yeah, I can. In this option, we made the shape of the building to allow for the drive to go underneath. But because it's two story, we can take some of those spaces up to the second floor. Going back to option D. Either in order to put the drive to get to the underground parking. This building would need to come closer to the train tower and that would, for the width of a drive, you can see our building would be right about here, which would be too tight.
The other reason is it puts the parking underneath. The other reason is it puts the parking underneath one building and people would have to come up and then walk across site to get to where they're they're going to. Which isn't isn't horrible, but it is create a kind of a logistic challenge.
The last question, I I I think it's we we run into a serious problem if we're putting lots of people in those meetings or fire training or something, if we're putting lots of cars out on the street or blocking people's driveways, I think we're going to run into a big political problem there, too. So I was wondering why, I know it's expensive, but why not consider putting parking under the whole site?
Great question. I think we're we're more from a, if there's more parking that is required, the the parking. The parking garage can always be expanded to another bay to add add more. One of the things we'll need to deal with, the location of the training tower that currently has a basement. So wanting to be efficient in working around that, so we're kind of limited by the training tower unless that wants to relocate. And so in one option, we're on one side and one the other. I think we can expand it to add more. It's it really is quite honestly, just a cost cost consideration.
How much do you think the cost? How much do you anticipate the cost in this slide? To put that underground structure there? And that's a how many square feet is that, the whole structure?
I I don't have that. And I will say, I hesitate starting to get too detailed.
Right, right.
Until we do some study. My guy was want to, the other reason to not or to consider not putting the parking under the whole site. Is it does tie the projects together right now where it's kind of the answer building can be built at one time, the the training tower can be built at one time and the fire station can be built at one time. If you expand that parking structure even to the option where it's right against the training tower, I'll take a little bit of some coordination. The further we keep that away, they can be three separate or independent projects versus one more, call it mega project.
I just have one last question. I know we've, there's been some concern about contamination in the fire station and keeping keeping contaminated equipment and and clothing and so forth away from the firefighters. Is there any danger of having offices on top of of the fire station in terms of contaminating the offices?
Um, the the answer is no, because of the the new processes that we do when we build a new fire station is we make sure that there's transitional zones for as firefighters come from what we call the hot zone into the green zone. And so you wouldn't have somebody from the office space entering into the area that's considered hot where the fire trucks are and where they store their, that's why on all the slides we had all the support gear on the opposite side of the apparatus. So it's very common that both the living space and office spaces are safe from that hot zone.
And there's independent mechanical systems.
Okay.
Mechanical systems.
That was all my questions for now, Robert.
Rob, you had you got your hand up?
Yeah, thank you, Robert. I see that the I T unit space is pretty much tripled in size, which is a good thing. I mean, those poor employees are packed in there like sardines. What I'm concerned about is there is our S A N network, our storage area network. Because that's going to involve climate control type situation. And are we good to spread that that those servers and everything out the district? In different facilities or are we going to have it into one main facility? Like in at the at Station One?
Um, the options that we propose, that is, I I think that's probably a whole nother discussion, but the options that we proposed would allow you to spread them out. We do, or and for example, at Station One, the options that had the building, the two-story building on the with the ancillary building, that did provide for a server room both at the fire station and the ancillary building. So that gave you some redundancy there and the ability to flex.
So that would. There's already, there's already two server rooms. One is at Station One currently and one is at Fire Admin at one seventy. So there are two rooms. But the problem is it's in the same power grid, so that was one of the things that we also looked at with Station Four, which obviously is something that we've talked about. And then I know we keep talking about that the I T guys are packed in the room, but that was their choice. It's no longer a possibility. So, you know, just so everybody knows. There's this process and there's getting people back to work right away. So we're already handling, as I brought up in the COVID update. Any two or three person office is being changed currently because it can't be that way right now. So those, we're making accommodations right away, so we're getting people back to work and we're not putting them in a space like that.
All right, thanks, Keith, because, yeah. Especially with the different limitations or anything, you know, I'm glad you're on that. What about storage off-site? Have we addressed that with our I T group?
Yeah, they're actually looking at that. We provided them with a vendor that's helping them. And that vendor, which helps other fire and law enforcement agencies in the county has ample storage at McClellan Air Force Base in Sacramento. And they're very familiar with public safety.
Okay, great, thank you.
So we it's seven thirty. We've kind of been at this for almost two hours. There was a request by Jim to put a plug or put a pin on. I guess, Michael, you going over the, I guess, the admin building as well as the the annex, those are, I guess, the two next slides you and Charles are going to go through.
That would be a Station Seventy Seven and Warehouse.
And the warehouse. So so what what is the pleasure of the board? I mean, do you want to continue on? Do you want to just pause here and just have Michael and Chuck, Charles to come back later, finish this off? We still have another item, yes.
I I think it might be relevant to to our later discussion in closed session to hear about Station Seventy Seven and the warehouse.
I agree. I totally agree. So at least for those two, we should listen to the options. I would be particularly interested in the cost.
So I'm not, I'm not really clear. Are you stating that if I may, to to finish up or not to talk about Station Seventy Seven as well as the warehouse at this juncture?
No, 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 to talk, I mean, I, the way I'm hearing Jim and I, I would like to talk about Seventy Seven and the warehouse because we have another item that may pertain to all of the those properties as well. Is that what you're saying, Jim?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, I I agree. I like, I would like to look at the options and specifically the costs.
Okay. Can I say, Robert, I I would suggest that if we're going to do that, and I agree with doing that, that we ought to finish the whole presentation because it sounds like the last part is very short.
Right.
And then we know what the whole pile of money that we need looks like.
But, you know, Robert, I I I would like to refrain from actually making a selection of the options presented tonight. It was a lot of information to process.
I understand. Yeah, I mean, the mine is almost fried, if not fried from data overload. So I I agree with that. I I'm all for that. So maybe what Michael and Charles can do is at least finish what you your presentation. It would give us the information that would be needed for the next me, next item. But refrain from from any selection at this point in time.
Or that. Or just perhaps your station seventy.
You're cutting out, Jim.
I would suggest that we hear Station Seventy Seven and the warehouse and then defer any remaining portion of the presentation to a future date.
I think that's the only two items left. Am I correct, Michael?
Well, so that was my question, Michael. How long do you think Stations Three and Five would take?
There's only, there's only two options for Station Three and Station Five and
Very short.
Probably only take about ten fifteen minutes.
Or less.
Jim, I I agree with Chuck. I mean, if it's not going to take that one, we might as well get the whole comprehensive.
I'm fine, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, but I I would definitely focus on Seventy Seven in the warehouse right now and then go quickly go through three and five.
So, Michael, how many more slides you have?
I'll click fast and I think Charles can talk faster than I can and we Station One and the admin had a lot more of the detail to it.
Right, right.
Warehouse and Seventy Seven will be easier.
So why don't we, why don't we go through it? Let's say you got fifteen minutes to finish. Is that possible?
We'll go quick.
Go quick.
All right.
Wait, Michael, let me just say thank you for this analysis. It's so good and very helpful.
Oh, thank you. And I do apologize if we went long. We just wanted to make sure to give.
No, no.
No, it's it's very important. It's a capital project. These are, this is going to fit in our capital project plan.
No problem, no problem. I think we've been waiting for this, so let's get get it out out the door. So, yeah, proceed, please.
All right.
So Fire Station One and the admin Seventy Seven, the warehouse, we looked at on the east side and how they really work together or how they could work together as sites. So option A for the warehouse is primarily just consolidating, reconfiguring U S R and using adding the east side warehouse function to it. Provides some more vehicular training, trailer parking that we can offload from Station Seventy Seven to relieve a little bit of congestion over there. But the biggest thing is providing an east side kind of storage and secondary. Going out of costs is a little bit different there, but for the most part, there you go. Thanks, Mike. Just consolidating, getting through some of the issues at the current warehouse, resolving those, providing more site lighting, some gates, and then adding the warehouse function so that it could be used to pick up supplies. This would mostly be secondary, looking at Fire Station One as the primary kind of warehouse component, but it provides that they don't firefighters don't have to come over to Fire Station One if needed. I think we there we go. Seventy Seven would keep the mechanic shop there. It expands and alleviate some of the issues at Seventy Seven. Expanding the mechanic shop, looking at keeping the Choco House and modifying that for the Italian Chief Office. That is not currently the correct zoning, so it'd either be rezoned or looking as more of a temporary measure. It includes a larger dedicated fitness room being added on to Seventy Seven. And adding a covered extension to the mechanic shop because the easement and the existing condition of the pre-energized building, we don't think it would be financially prudent to add on to that building and most likely trigger a huge seismic retrofit and ADA retrofit. So if you could go to the plan, Mike, yeah, I'll show that. So adding on a covered area, be keeping the existing doors, but then they could at least be covered and work on the larger equipment in that area. Doing some small modifications inside the shop area to meet their their needs. And then over at the station. Reconfiguring to some internal modifications to add in second, another bunk room that they need and then adding the workout facility on the backside. Kind of over their patio, so they kind of eliminates that patio function from that station.
Also adding the B C over at the Chilco House.
Correct.
If if I could ask about that renovation, the estimated cost of renovating the Chilco House is three hundred and sixty four thousand dollars. Is that right? I think I was on the previous slide.
Correct. I think that would be taking it up to more of a commercial standard versus the residential kind of standard.
So would that be a complete rebuild of the structure or renovation of what's there now?
Renovation of what's there, adding on parking ADA ramps. Probably new mechanical systems. Putting in there so it's more than a house. And getting it to that that standard. It is pre-dated wage, so it is more than, and that's total budget, probably the cost on top of that.
Thank you.
Option B for the warehouse is moving over the mechanic shop, consolidating the U S R and warehouse to make space for that. Adding the warehouse and then moving over the mechanic shop to the warehouse function. The one of the huge benefits we saw of that is getting more personnel at one site for security and be able to share kind of resources amongst each other. There are some challenges to this one because of the exist condition of the existing facility. With the soil and the structure and everything. And because of the city's requirement that if it goes over a certain threshold, it has to be brought up to flood standards. This is probably one of the most risky ones. So our estimate really varies. If you see kind of the the warehouse just under three million, that includes project cost. Our car cost is just like right at the threshold and that's, you know, really rough at this stage. If we go over that threshold and and do insignificant changes, your retrofit and the floodplain changes really bring it up to close to eleven million dollars of change. So without, you know, doing a full-on plan and getting a full cost estimate, this one's a much more much more challenging. And you're still you're still with an older building. Now, it would be a significant retrofit, creating new roofing. Much more seismic modifications, but still kind of have a an older building. Still only provides two bays for the mechanic shop. We're trying to minimize how much structural changes we do, leaving the existing openings. And then in the center there is having the warehouse function kind of between the U S R side. This is the, we'll call it the most risky of the changes, lot, lot of variables and potential variables through permitting on this one. At Seventy Seven, that actually frees up Seventy Seven for quite a bit. So really moving over the water rescue and alleviate some of the warehouse functions and trying to get water rescue all at Seventy Seven, most of that equipment there or all of that equipment there. It frees up the mechanic shop for that, so they have a lot more covered area for for the boats and trailers. And if we can go to the the plan here, there isn't a lot of significant work at Seventy Seven. So there's not a lot of investment on the city's property. Still similar, keeping the B C and the the Choco House, still adding on the modifying to add a bunk room and the work and the workout facility. But very limited work on the back auxiliary building.
One, one thing to keep in mind is that this is just a moment in time and I believe we relocated the patrol to Station Six, chief, is that correct?
That's correct.
So some of the work that's being shown could potentially come off such as renovating the dormitory area of Station Seventy Seven, since we only have three personnel there now instead of five. We wouldn't necessarily have to add that extra dorm room, so.
Wait, is that, John, are you, can we see that in the last slide where there's the? Okay, so where I'm trying to, I am so bad at visualizing this. This is why I'm never going to be an architect, Michael. You're going to have to bear with me. This is like the worst thing for me. So what are you talking about, John, in terms of the personnel housing, I guess, is it?
So Mike's showing you right now, the the five little highlighted areas there. We were originally, we had five personnel there because we had the engine and a patrol. And that was something new when we were originally looking at this. And then as we were completing our designs, the patrol was relocated from Station Seventy Seven to Station Six, which removed two personnel. So now we only really need three of those dorm rooms. And we have four. So we don't need to add a. So we don't need to add a fifth one unless operations decides to move the patrol back or additional personnel there.
Thanks, John.
Not a problem.
So Option C is going to get a little bit different, but there's a couple of studies have been done and wanted to incorporate these, so you had a full picture. A previous study had been completed for replacing the Station 77. So this is just showing what could be done. Taking over the Choco House lot, demoing the current 77 or combining those two lots and then building a new fire station here, which would be a new modern fire station, meeting all of the needs in that, for that area. This does not address the mechanic shop or that function.
So would those still remain in the back?
Those could still remain in the back, yes. And then Option D, through the process, kind of in the middle, there had been some discussion of potentially a new fire station at a different site. And we wanted to address that, but that really could alleviate the 77 issues. I think that would be one of the, the better choices potentially. And that would get the battalion chief, a new station on that side, and then 77 could either be just used for mechanic shop or surplus. Go back to that, the summary slide real quick, Mike. So that it could open up 77 just for the mechanic shop.
Can I ask you a dumb question? What is the space difference in terms of square footage between the warehouse and the Station 77 lot? Do you know?
I don't know. Sorry. I can, I have it. I just don't have it off the top of my head.
I mean, when you find it, that, that means it's no hurry. I was just curious.
Yeah, actually, I might not have the total. I can, we can find that and we can include that. I don't think we've done the total square footage of the 77 lots. We weren't redoing that. I do have an option for the warehouse site.
Right, so like with Station 77, I think there are easements too, so I'm, I don't know. I mean, I, I would love to know that with the square, with the easements and without the easements, the square footage.
Okay, we'll take.
Thank you.
Can you go to the Station 77 conceptual real quick and we can show them where the easements are and
Yeah.
Not, not this one to the?
There you go. You want the first one?
Th- th- this one works. And so our easement is adjacent to the parking area between the mechanic shop and the parking area, our station in the parking area. And so as Mike and Charles were saying earlier, what, what this does is it impacts our ability to expand the mechanic shop to add a third bay. It also puts limitations on how we design a future fire station there if we decided to rebuild a, a fire station at 77. However, you still need an entryway into the lot, so that easement does provide that, that entryway. So it's not, it's not a huge deficiency or huge issue for this lot.
Probably the biggest, you know, it, it gets you in, but it does also make it diff, it's a long, narrow lot, so it's not ideal for big, big equipment. It's just, it's challenging. It's pretty much what you see is, for the most part, the option, what you can do in order to get around.
So where are we? You're on Option C or we are?
Option D.
Okay.
And this is very similar to see, this is a new station at a different, different site. Again, we didn't do these plans, but it just shows that a new, new station at 88 would then alleviate the issues at 77 and open up that site to either have a very small crew or just no, no firefighter crew at all that could be mechanic shop and support.
There, can you go back really quick? The, the one thing that does, just to point out is if the district acquires this property, there is a desire from the city to retain a portion of the property that's adjacent to Willa Road, and that's roughly, I believe, about seven, well, it's about 12 feet plus the five feet for the sidewalk. So this conceptual may have to be modified slightly in order to accommodate that dedication.
And also, isn't there an easement in the alleyway as well, John? Is that part, I don't even know if that's part of this.
There, there are several easements on this property with a portion of it being in that dedication area. Also along Ivy Road is another easement. So you'll, you'll notice that all the parking is proposed over the easement while the fire station is far away from the easements.
Thank you.
Yeah.
The, the benefit of that is you can build a new station without impacting 77. That's probably one of the biggest and get a new modern fire station, get the battalion chief. It would free up the Chilco site as well to be sold, because there would, there would be no need for that site anymore from what we see. And then go, go ahead, sorry.
No, no, I say Option E.
Yes, Option E is a warehouse. And we just wanted to include this. This is if, if the warehouse were to be built as new with the setbacks that are required of what, what that looks like. So this is a new warehouse with USAR. The district warehouse on the east side and a mechanic shop that would be able to be built to current standards and what they need. So it's most optimally for their, that function. It'd be a three bay. Here, Andy could have more code compliance staging in other areas that can be used for other uses. So this shows a three bay pull-through for a mechanic shop, so they can come in one side, go out the other. We can economize and maximize as much of the parking that we can on the site and the circulation. Has the warehouse functions for the east side still on the first floor, small, small lobby, just to be able to go up. And then the USAR over on the right side of the drawing for main warehouse and then the staging up above the mechanic shop offices and the district warehouse side. So you have a second story internal to a warehouse. This would be most likely envisioned as a pre-engineer, pre-engineer metal building, which would be the most economical when it have to be an essential facility as well, so. It is still slightly more expensive than retrofitting what we believe on the cost estimate. I think they would be, it would be close. At this stage, I don't, I don't know if we have enough information. It would probably be, I want to say almost would be, it'd be just as easy as retrofitting. Either one, you're going to have to relocate USAR equipments temporarily to store. And in this way, you definitely get a modern, new building all around, including insulated panels, you know, metal roof insulation, etc.
And this is at the current site?
Correct.
Okay.
And if you can see the dash lines up at the top, we could push the building back further, but then you couldn't pull through. So we, in this, in this option, kind of put it towards the center, so you can pull through, get all the way around the site. And it's just about the same square footage as the current.
Chuck.
Yep. Real quick question. If we didn't have a fire station at the Station 77 site, could the entire warehouse function be on that site?
The mechanic shop in the warehouse, I, but I do not believe.
I'm just talking about the warehouse.
The, the district warehouse or the USAR warehouse?
Both.
I don't believe that USAR warehouse could fit at 77.
That's why I asked what the different space, square footage differential was. I had that same exact question.
That was the, that was the warehouse. The shop currently at 77 was the warehouse. And we deployed out of there for 9/11, but that was before we received the second equipment cache, before we received fleet assets, before we received the water rescue cache and before we received the weapons of mass destruction cache. The team was smaller and I can tell you the problem with, as he's already noted, the problem with the site is it's a narrow lot. So what happens is it's very difficult for the tractor trailers and there's a lot of maneuvering out in the street or drive around the block, which I'm sure the neighbors would not appreciate. That was, if you remember, that was one of the reasons we tried to buy the house on Terminal was so we could do a circular there, but unfortunately that kind of all went wrong.
One, one of the things to look at on this slide is the vehicle parking. The vehicles that are shown are district and USAR assets. I'm not, don't, don't go back to the Station 77 slide, but the Station 77 slide has almost the same number of vehicles and they're not these vehicles. So we need both sites just for the vehicle parking alone, without even considering the, the remaining storage needs. And, and at the Station 77 site, it does not have the capacity for all those additional vehicles.
Correct. And in all of these options, I don't think you could get rid of it 77, even if you built 88. I don't think you could get rid of 77 because of the, the parking capacity. Still have to keep it for some, some use.
What, one other thing to look at when you look at the slide too is remember behind, so the upper part of the slide is again harvest properties. What Harvest was proposing early on to do, again, who knows where they are, because they were in discussions with the city. But that, that driveway that you see where it touches the back of their property, that's why they were so interested in having at, at least a discussion and wanted to introduce themselves. Because their proposal was to build, was to elevate the lot and then also to add like a table to build the, the actual buildings they were proposing in there. John, do you remember how many feet they were talking in elevation difference? Because I remember it was like, what was it, eight or 12 or something like that?
I, I don't think they were talking necessarily about the elevation difference specifically. I, I remember I brought it up between our property and their property. They just wanted to drive it through and I go, well, you can't do that because there is elevation difference that would have to be resolved. I think the elevation difference is, is probably four, three, three, four feet.
Yeah, currently.
Yeah, because they put, they put a concrete cap, cap on that lot already.
So just know there's an interest out there to have at least some potential partnering that could go on to support their project, which of course, you know, we don't know where it would go, but there might be some leverage in doing that.
What I, what I do know is in terms of talking and also that they, they have to elevate their property or put a a wall on the backside of their property facing the bay. Because that's part of what the city's asking them to do because of the structure that they're putting there. It's going to be required. And plus they had to buy additional land as a buffer between their site and the bay.
Correct. And that would be the same for, or similar for the site or new or the major retrofit. Most likely probably say a wall, raising the site would be the best. If we could do it logistically, it'd probably be the most costly though as well. But putting in a flood wall then would at least slow that down in the, in the event and meet that requirement by the city.
Well, the interesting thing is that since their site is going to be, is behind our site, whether that same requirement, if they are building it on the backside of their site, which is the buffer for the most part between where our site is and the bay, whether that requirement was still whole for us, I don't know. If we were side by side facing the bay, then I could see, well, yeah, we would have to, we would have to do that, put the wall up. But since we are in front of them, they, it's our site and then with their site in the backside of it, whether that wall would still be necessary.
And Robert, they bought, I think you might know this too. They bought the old concrete paneling company, which is not shown, but it's, it would be to the upper right.
Right.
So they bought Catalitica and they bought the concrete paneling company, which is another 8 acre site that touches Week Street. So it is that full backside. You know, again, when we were talking, I, I understood very quickly, once we looked at the aerial view, what, what advantage we had, because again, the roadway that we have to Polgus is what they want. Borman Steel is not willing to sell outside of what I understand, a pretty substantial price. So you know, there, there's some room, I guess, to put it, you know, bluntly for future negotiations or discussion about swapping or, you know, how we could work together to improve both sites and they get what they need and maybe, you know, we end up with a new building or a new location. So I don't know where that's going to go. Again, they just introduced themselves to us and, and we kind of figured out what they were up to.
I, I hate to throw out necessarily another option, but just to go back to the, keeping the 77 site as a requirement. One potential would be if this site could be expanded to to have all of the district vehicles parked here and then you built a new Station 88, then that would be able to alleviate the Station 77 site. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
I mean, those are just different options. Yeah.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't explore that. I just wanted to, that, that would probably be the only, is looking for additional site to park, to meet the district's parking needs, storage needs.
So moving along, so is this the last option we have here?
It, it is.
We're doing options for Station 3 and Station 5, right?
Correct. So do you want to skip the, we don't need to go through the finding analysis?
I'm interested in the cost.
Okay.
Anybody else? I am too, but yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm interested as well.
Alright, go ahead, Jeff, please.
Yeah, so just as the, the summary, we'll look down at the bottom. So Option A is, is very, doing very little at the warehouse. As we talked about the change at 77, that would go down slightly of not having to do the, the dorm rooms. That's about 3.6. So just add a cover at the 77, add the workout facility and modify the battalion chief office. And then for the warehouse, it's very minimal, but that doesn't include any site lighting and security upgrades that would be recommended, period. If it's going to maintain. Option B. Read very little at the Station 77. It's just the battalion chief and the workout facility. And then as I mentioned, the warehouse is not necessarily the most. It depends on what is triggered however though, and we're right at that, that variant. But it could be, you know, in the 3 million, but it's kind of small print there. I want to make sure it's, should be seen big though. It's close to 8.6 million if things start getting triggered.
Well, even if it doesn't get triggered, Charles, it's still important to consider doing those improvements.
Correct.
What we have at that facility. We have our USAR assets and now we're talking about moving our mechanics there for a structure that's not, not structurally sound. You know, you, you would really want to consider, if you're going to do that move, doing those type of improvements.
Yeah, and John, I don't have the, the cost of that equipment and it's inside that. I'm sure it's pretty. It might be more than the building itself, right? That is definitely something to consider. It probably is more than the building itself, I may rephrase that. Option C, you can do various options with the warehouse, but that just shows the estimated cost of the 77 rebuild and that's primarily a difference in Option 88 is having to do a temporary station and relocation and demo of 77. So Option C and D are really just rebuilding a Station 77 and/or 88. And then either A, B, or E for the options for the warehouse. And then lastly, the option for the warehouse is rebuilding a new warehouse and that's about 12.6 million dollars and that would be full, you know, up to seismic capacity, meeting flood control, floodplain mitigations, site security, optimally for mechanic shop, etc.
Mike and Charles, quick question. What, how much is the construction cost inflating each year? Is it still around 3% to 5%?
We don't know what's going to happen now, but it's been about 5% for the last five to seven years. Especially in the Bay Area, it's probably been even more than that. Generally, it's about 5%. Especially in the Bay Area, probably been even more than that, generally, it's about 5%, it's gone up six or seven percent in the Bay Area at a certain time.
I would say even recently, it's probably gone up a little higher because of the school projects that have been out there for the public type of contractors that would go after these projects.
Okay, is there another slide after this? Charles, you need to go through?
So if you'd like to go through three and five, this, this should be pretty quick.
Okay.
I'll, I'll go, Mike.
Oh, yeah, yeah, sorry, Charles, go ahead.
So option A for Station 3 is just building a new station at the current site, to be a one-story station. The building and auxiliary structure most likely first, for the exercise room, temporary exercise room in the back, and then that could be used for equipment storage later on. And then you can go to the slide, floor plan, Mike. This one shows, though, that it does not fit with the existing station there, so you would have to find a temporary station for the, the current station. We'll go on to the next one.
And something to note, the fitness and storage building is allowed to be outside of the setback lines. So the station here is, is fits right in this little box of the setback lines, so that's, that one-story station fits there. And then there's your temporary trailer, and then this, this fitness storage is allowed to be outside.
And that's a maximum of 1,200 square feet.
But, yeah, that, that fitness facility would be used for fitness and EMS storage for the immediate need of the existing station. And then during the remodel, that could be the, the apparatus bay for the engine. And then, once the new fire station is constructed, that building could then be used to either store a reserve apparatus or supplies.
Yep, so this would be your temporary fire station right here.
Yeah.
Construction.
So option A for Station 5, it's replacing with a two-story station at the current loc, at a new location, excuse me. And that's gonna be very similar to what you'll see for option B for Station 3. We do not have a site, so I believe one of the most challenging is looking for an appropriate site for the Station 5 and, and acquiring it. And then, so option B for three and five, is building a new two-story Fire Station 3, two bays. And then this fits within the setback and allows the existing station to remain, so you don't have a temporary station. You go to the foreground, there you go. So we're building in the, the house, current house property, leaving the fire station site that's there. Living and support would be over the second floor, not over the out bay, so it's the most optimally we can do for a two-story station. The fitness and storage would still be there just to, to eat the storage in the, in the future, but to meet the immediate needs of that station. And then after, assuming that after its station is built, either that property is sold, or find a different use for that. The support building is close to the property line, so it would have to be either lot line to be adjusted, or that would have to be a, probably a, a variance from the city. And then option B, we don't have a floor plan 4, but this is relocating, or replacing Fire Station 5 at its current location, which is very challenging, we, it, two bays technically fit, but trying to get up to the second floor and providing access may not work, it's extremely tight to, at this, at this site. That's the biggest thing is, it's hard finding a site, we did a quick search of available properties in the area, and there is not, not much available. It's kind of, there's a challenge on both sides of, of Station 5. Similar cost to replace it either way, and it depends on the property that you have, that you're able to find the price there. So, I think we promised three and five would be really quick. Three is much more manageable. We would recommend the, the two-story option, you don't have to do the temporary station, much easier construction. Option, Fire Station 5 is a much more challenging, and we would recommend, if property can be located, that it be built on a new site.
Okay, all right.
And there we go.
So, yeah, there we go. This is kind of recap, I, I think this is where we, it appears that we might need to stop at this point in time. I don't know if the other board members concur with that or not, that's what I was getting from, from the conversation, and it's, I think it'd probably be another day that we need to come back, because this is where the work, our work gonna begin in terms of trying to come to some conclusion as to what options might, might be appropriate, and that may be a longer conversation. So, if all board members agree with that, or got some other options we need to proceed from at this point in time, we'll just leave this. Chief, do you have any comments yourself? How urgent is this to, to get done?
It's not urgent at all, directors, and given everything that we have going on, I think it's great information, I know that the other chiefs have not had a chance to even see it yet in terms of any kind of comment and so forth, nor has any sort of, you know, station or facilities team, but it really depends on which route we're gonna go, and where, you know, where time needs to be spent, so I think that's, you know, John and I gotta talk about it, obviously, you know, there needs to be another meeting date, but I think equally the closed session, and I think this was helpful for that part of it, so I'm glad you, you wanted to do the warehouse and the 77 site, because it got you to see both 88 and 77, and hear that, that part, which was probably the most beneficial, and why we wanted the closed session at the end to have that real property negotiation discussion.
So, are any last parting questions for Michael and Charles, before we end this public, in this, this, this session? No question, all right. So at this point, thank you, Michael, thank you, Charles, for your presentation, I thought it was fantastic. It was long, but it was, it was worth it.
Great job. Thank you. Thank you, we wish, could have condensed it more, but.
That was okay, never enough information, as they say, so, we'll move on. So I'll move into public comment number two. Michelle, do we have anybody that want to speak on this item? If not, then I'll call for adjournment of this meeting, this session, and go into closed session meeting.
So moved.
Second.
It's been the second roll call. Michelle, is there? Okay, anybody opposed, say yes, and then we'll, we'll note it later.
Sorry, I was on mute, I've got, I gotta go, so, thank you. Director Brancy?
Hi.
Director Crowley?
Hi.
Director Solano?
Hi.
Director McLaughlin?
Hi.
And Director Jones?
Hi. Okay, now we're going to.
Robert, can we just take a little bit of a break?